And I think we're out. That's good, alright. So this is the ordinance subcommittee meeting, May 24th, 2017, 6:00 PM. We're in the meeting at 6:01. Councilor Hurd, our chair, was called away today, lost it. So he will not be here. And he asked me to see if we could run through any items.
Okay.
He had thought that the plastic bags might be one of the big ones that we've been dealing with. I know it's a huge and heavy assignment and you're still in your...
It is. I don't have that prepared today because at full council meeting, he didn't say that we were discussing that today.
We were discussing that today, that's right. He didn't say that.
Yeah.
But he did say we would be discussing another matter. And that was the seasonal cottages.
Right.
I don't see a lot of people here to discuss it, but there are two.
Hi.
Hi. I'm JP Quozensby. This is Councilor Tamara Smith.
Thank you, I understand you.
She's my interpreter.
I'm here.
The harder here.
Harder here. We'll try to speak loudly.
Okay.
Have you had... Hello?
Hi, I'm looking for the city council.
This is ordinance subcommittee. You're looking for finance?
Um, my...
No, Mindy's looking for this ordinance.
Looking for here.
Hey, how's it going?
Ordinance, if you're looking for ordinance, please.
How's it going?
Come on in. Oh, you're going to take one of the chairs off.
Oh, I can do that too.
Sit up there, I wanted to get your chair.
Or it's that little...
Okay. You don't have that time. Mindy?
Yes. Hi.
Do you want to come up to the chair?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know the...
We just opened up the meeting.
Awesome.
And we were discussing the proposed ordinance, which we will be reviewing on June 6th.
Right.
With the planning board.
Right.
But we wanted to see if anyone had anything to say about it so we could understand it a bit better.
Sure. You guys are here for the same thing?
Heard.
I, um, I forget who are city, uh... I'm sorry, I'm always running late everywhere. I'm trying to get my reins around me. Yeah, I had been working with the planning board a little bit over the winter about changing the campground, I don't know the proper terminology, the campground language, to become a cottage community.
Okay.
And so this is where this language comes from.
Okay, so you're the proponent of this?
I am, actually.
Okay, good. We were certainly, I always like to open things up when I run meetings, to see what the proponent has to say, any plans, any ideas, why is this important to you?
Sure, these guys are actually my neighbors. So I bought this piece, right next to these guys, five acre piece of property that we'd like to turn into a short-term cottage rental community, put ten or a dozen small cottages on it, and be able to rent them out seasonally. It would be a business for us, basically.
A business, okay. Do you have any plans, layouts, or anything like that?
Uh, sure.
See, you have a lot of paper with you. We only have a little paper.
Well, I spoke with, I forget our city council member's name.
Salem Irving?
Yes, I've spoken with Salem a couple of times, and he just said, "Show up, you guys would be reviewing it." But I was really supposed to show up to the June 6th meeting?
That is a big one, yeah.
Right.
Because it'll be a joint meeting, and then the way the process works is, this meeting, the joint meeting with the planning board, each, the board will vote again on any proposals.
Right.
At some point. It may be at that meeting on June 6th, or it may be a subsequent meeting.
Right, right, okay.
And then both will make recommendations to the full city council.
Okay.
So the ordinance subcommittee will be meeting with the planning board.
Right.
And then the full council will have a chance to review this.
Right. So I don't have anything, I mean, I just actually came from a person that's been helping us think about it, in the lobby.
For the record, we probably should have the...
Oh, yeah.
Minutes here, okay?
Mindy, what's your listing?
It's a call for a minute. C as in cat, O as in tom, H, B, R, M, A, N. What do you think for you?
Where's West Street?
West Street is over here.
Off, off here.
Yep.
Okay.
Is this you?
Yep.
Okay.
And then this is us, back here.
Okay.
There are some features already that we bought that we liked, that we'd like to keep.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a bunch of apple trees back here.
Mm-hmm.
The houses existing, a barn, another barn, some garden areas we'd like to keep. And this hasn't been mapped out or planned out, it was really quick. We'd like to do two small, 300 square feet or less cottages, and then one bigger, just under 600 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Anything, you know, should, you guys decide to move forward, talk to neighbors, whatever they want to do, anything could be moved anywhere.
So you were currently thinking of two, of 200 square foot cottages here?
So what we would like to do is have clusters of three.
Uh-huh.
With two small and one a little bit bigger. These would just be a one-room with a bathroom and an efficiency kitchen, no, um, no stoves, no ranges, anything like that. Again, this is like done in about a half an hour. It loses them this afternoon. We would actually like to adapt, this barn, the back of this barn is falling down, so we'd like to take it down. We would like to actually adapt this barn into one of the 600 square feet cottages, so that we're not taking up any more green space.
And what about these two? They just seem so much closer to this property.
Yeah, we can, we're open to whatever. I mean, this has, a lot of it is clear, there is sumac trees and some evergreens that were just planted on this line. We would actually like to put a fence up there in the future, if these guys would be okay with it. We can also get rid of those altogether. We were trying to keep, this is a one-acre field, we're trying to keep this clear, just for privacy and actually shouldn't be looking at it so much.
In your, um, this publication for the zoning change?
Yep.
Number one, it says seasonal cottage community, I want you to have that, but read that paragraph, you're looking at R-80, R-40, and R-3. This is R-35.
That change has been made, I think, actually.
Yeah. And I've got a lot of questions about this, and I don't know, I don't think this is a committee that's going to explain these questions.
We may very well not be, but hopefully we can get your answers.
The buffer shall be at least 25 feet in width, it shall contain the screen and planting, blah, 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 right? Where's the 25 feet right here? You can get it here. Where's the 25 feet right there? And I have another question for you. This property used to be together, okay? Previous owner wheeled off our property right over here, we got eight acres, goes down the dingle into the wetlands, right? And then this is a five acre spot. I have a surveyor's pin, if I can find it somewhere right here. I definitely have a surveyor's pin right here. But I've had, we have had to go by our real estate agent, the previous owner, and now whatever this, I mean, this is an official, it's not a plat, but I don't know where this line is.
Okay.
And this line would have to be established by a surveyor before, I think, before any of this could be built.
We have a surveyor's copy of yours and ours together. Do you guys have that?
We don't have that.
Yeah.
But once again, right here, you got this, this is a road off of West Street, right here? I want to know where the 25-foot buffer is. It doesn't exist, it can't exist, because they don't own the property unless they move the road over onto their property, okay? And we share a common entrance off of West Street. It's a very dangerous corner.
Okay.
And we constantly have people, even though you pull in our driveway, and there's a light on the sign that says, "No trespass, posted, no trespassing," is this 132 West Street?
All the time.
So that's, if you guys are going to move forward, I don't think it's unreasonable, that has to be addressed.
Okay.
The 25-foot buffer has to be addressed.
Can I speak to that?
Because you don't have...
One second. I think when we were talking during the planning board meetings, a 25-foot buffer was between the cottage and...
This is, that's here, and already we've noticed increased traffic. The history of this place is pretty sordid, okay? Multiple people living there. I have a barn in the back that horse, you saw horses, all the paddocks, curtains and mattresses on the floor. This is what, not what Mindy's doing, this is past use, that's a town never addressed. Transient people in a residential neighborhood. I don't want this opened up to scandal words again. And if this buffer is for the, our benefit, for the 25-foot, let's see, it says landscaping and buffering shall be provided along lot lines.
Okay.
So this whole thing, they own the property right here, it's all just grown up right now.
Yeah.
But if this is going to be the rules or regulations, and we got a shared driveway, it seems common sense to me, but I don't know, I'm biased, that this whole road has to be moved over to give me the 25 feet. Because right now, once again, I got to go back to my realtor, and what we, what we were told when the sale went down, was that this is our property along here, right up, almost right up within like two feet of the dirt driveway right here.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't see how this is going to work. This right here definitely going to work. We already have people on our property, because they're renting on Airbnb, and this had not been addressed, and they're already renting. She's been scared by people coming across, they've called their dog. And I can't understand why you're putting a commercial operation in a residential neighborhood. Who's going to benefit? How's the town going to benefit?
Okay.
No, no, I've had, do you have...
I've, this is the first time I've seen the plans for this.
Oh, really? You're surprised, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know the project, we were hoping to get more information on the project today, so I'm not, I'm hearing this information new, so in terms of my opinion on it, I can hear both sides of it. I mean, I...
Well, I just, when I pointed out, I mean, I have a, we have a lot of adjustments just going in, okay? A lot of questions that we have written down, which I don't know if today's to do it, but I'm just looking at this right here, and looking at what you guys have already, the language you guys have already put on paper.
This is language that the planning board has put on paper.
Right, right. I mean, as a draft. By you guys.
It is part of the East Hampton, but this is really our first time to hear everybody about it on the subject. So we're here to hear everybody's opinion on it.
Mm-hmm.
And in fact, we should, we should have your name for the record, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Name and address, please.
David.
So you were looking to put in 12 units, right?
Max, Linda, Ellen.
Matty, he owes you.
That's what I was...
I think it says it in here. I just have the draft copy from the last meeting I had, I don't have all the changes.
I've listened to, I've read the minutes, and it came up as 12, one time you wanted eight one-bedroom and two, and four, two-bedroom, right?
So the smaller ones, we wanted as a...
How many sewer connections you looking at there?
Well, this is three. Three. This already has sewer to it, two.
That building, is that building, if you go ahead with this, you have open water, you have buildings that are decrepit right now, or are they going to, are you going to make those safe?
This is something that would be in the future, this isn't...
But you're asking for this, and we're, where's the performance guarantee?
We're just at the point where we were talking to the planning board about changing some zoning.
Zoning, right. But if you do, but this is, this is what I'm getting to, Mindy, is that you're asking the planning board to create brand-new zoning, you need a special permit because it's zone residential right now? Nope, there's no...
What you need is a zoning change, which is very different from a special permit. Special permit is a process whereby the planning board gives permission and sets criteria based on current existing zoning. What we're doing here is something very different, and that is, your request is to change the zoning of the community, which requires a six-member vote of this nine-member city council in order to change. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to be sure that everybody understood that part of the process.
Sure.
Once again, based on the information I got from the town, right here it says, R-35, seasonal cottage community, what's SPB, special permit? What's a B?
Of the planning board. But that's the proposal for the new zoning.
Right.
That is being brought forth. And that's what we're here to discuss, is whether we want in this community to accept that proposal for new zoning, or tweak it, or say, "This isn't something that fits in our community, and this isn't how we want to move forward." So that's what we're here about.
So if I have a question, I mean...
Feel free.
Maybe, maybe it's not the right, maybe that you tell me. Is the planning board, well, I want to ask that question, that if they create the new zoning to allow this?
The planning board, the city council creates the zoning.
Or city, okay, whatever the proposal...
The planning board then goes ahead and listens to requests to develop according to the zones.
So when I, before I put an offer on the property, I want just to give you guys a little background. And I know that Linda and I spoke a little bit about campgrounds and stuff.
You said that you would never do that.
Well, a tent campground, right, that's not what I wanted, or like RVs and stuff like that. So I went and talked to Jessica Allen before we put an offer on this property, and said, "Hey, are we zoned for..." At that point, I was, as Linda and I talked, I was like, "Hey, are we zoned for a campground?" Because that's what was in my, just language at that point. And she was like, "Yeah, you could do that," you know, blah, blah, blah. So then, over a period of time, Jessica and I were talking, and she was like, "I don't think..." She said, "What would you want to do?" And I mentioned to her what we want to do, she said, "I don't think campground's really what it would fall under if that's something they're interested in." And they were asking us tenants and RVs and stuff, and I'm like, "No, no, I'm not like more of an upscale kind of situation." And so the planning board can't, as far as I understand, make changes without someone requesting that the zoning be changed. And so she asked me if we would want that, based on everything, and I was like, "Yeah, we'd want that." So I have been sitting every other week in planning board meetings with them, just discussing the situation. And then it goes to the city council, where you guys vote on it, or ask questions, or whatever has happened.
So why is the amendment on your agenda?
The proposal is on our agenda.
Which proposal?
This one.
Oh, the whole, this whole thing?
The proposed, I'm sorry, the proposed zoning amendment.
I thought there might be, whatever submitted, there may be the additional amendment. So, but, so this is on the agenda, so are we supposed to discuss it here? Are we supposed to...
You're welcome to discuss whatever you think is appropriate at this particular meeting. It kind of is introductory, there are two members of a three-member board present.
So you, you know, you could say, "Here are our concerns," and we may have immediate answers for that, or you could wait till the open forum, where both the planning board and the ordinance subcommittee are taking notes and hearing it. The forum isn't, the forum is your public opportunity, really, to air any grievances that you have, or any concerns on the fix.
I think we could, we could talk about some of our questions now, and then, yeah, I think that now.
I don't, I don't know if this is the proper venue, because, you know, you have to understand that this is not well-known.
Uh-huh.
My neighbors, and we've started talking to them, they don't know about this.
Okay.
Okay? And that's a problem, all right? Because we got, you're bringing in a commercial operation into a residential neighborhood. This should be in, what is it, R-80?
Residential.
We do have an R-80s.
R-80s. This should not be in an R-35. Now, just because you bought five acres of land, and you're under pressure to justify the purchase...
No, I wouldn't say that.
Or, all right, then this is, this is a commercial operation, right?
The reason that we're talking about the, we're in the R-35, and the campground fell under the R-35, I guess we don't have a fact dated to that. But the language for what they, we're going to, they being the city, allow for a campground falls under R-35.
This is a campground.
No, I was hoping to make it nicer, actually.
So you want to move a commercial operation into a residential neighborhood, it's zone residential, and you don't, you don't expect opposition to this?
Well, right now it's zoned also for campground use.
Do you expect, did you expect any opposition to this plan, bringing a commercial operation into a residential, because this is, this is commercial. You're going to charge, right?
Of course.
Okay. You're, it's a commercial. You were going to profit off of this, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Then you are bringing a commercial operation into a residential, area, zone residential. Did you think that you would incur any opposition?
Oh, I assumed it would be from you guys, yes.
Oh, it's going to be, yeah, it'll be me plus, okay?
I mean, don't get me wrong, I love you, right?
No.
I love you guys. I think we have a good relationship, so...
Right. I mean, and I, you know, we're, we're a working family, and one of my hugest concerns is people sitting up all night, and they're going to be on vacation, obviously.
Yeah, of course.
Party-ing it up. You know, I understand there's, you know, lighting issues, and there's, I mean, people like to sit out at night and drink and have fires, and there's animals, and like David said earlier, we've had people on our property at least five times since Easter, and...
My concern, sorry, one thing, I was, somebody's called your dog over, because I was trying to put your dog back because of the roofing that's going on.
No, it's a dog cable.
No, 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 they came on the property, saw the dog, and called the dog.
It was a guy with a kid.
Oh, it's my upstairs pet.
Well, we're trying really hard to train our dog right now.
Yeah.
With a collar and a...
Sorry, I'm laughing.
He's a golden, you know, he's a puppy, and, you know...
It just made me think of training your dog.
Yeah, so, you know, and we're trying really hard, and he's a knucklehead, and, you know? But, you know, I was sitting on the deck, and this guy was calling the dog, and then he kind of, you know, waved to me, and I was like, geez, you know? I was a little, I don't know how this was.
Yeah.
And so my biggest concern is, we've had people coming into our property and screaming about the dog, and afterward, you know, in hindsight, I thought, "Wait a minute, you're in my yard, but you're yelling at me for my dog." So it was an Asian couple.
We had, we had, you had that one person, two in the morning? We got spotlight, sorry, come on motion detectors. Two in the morning, the guy went through our yard and went on your property. Now, we didn't know that you were operating, you were running...
I don't think at that time we were, actually. We talked about, Linda and I talked about somebody walking through your property, and I said, "No, this was since Easter."
This is the things that we do not need. And what you're bringing in is a transient population, and I, I'm sorry, but this is the only information I have and what's on here, very vague. Going to operate between April 1st and November 30th inclusive, right? The seasonal cottage community may provide for short-term, up to seven days, and a 30-day period per tenant during the remainder of the year. Okay, so that's on the April 1st and November, right? Am I reading it correctly?
If I may, I was, I heard that, and I had lots of questions to Mindy.
Sure, I can try, I mean, I'm...
I'm going to try to answer that one, because it sounded like there was April 1st, and November 1st, and then throughout the rest of the year, so I didn't understand...
Yeah, this is vague.
What, so maybe you could try to answer that one.
Sure.
What's the maximum stay?
Just one at a time. So is there some, I couldn't understand what that language said. It said you're going to have a community between April 1st and November 30th inclusive, and then up to short-term, you have seven days, 30, up to a 30-day period during the remainder of the year.
So this is my understanding of the discussions for the planning board stuff, is when we first start talking about it, because the model they're using is like a campground model, right? Which is seasonal, basically, and which is what they asked me, and I was like, "Yeah, I'm fine with that, that would be great." And so it could be from whatever the beginning of that start date, it, it's not what I want, but it could be the same person for a nine-month period of time, or a 10-month period of time, for short-term.
Nine months or 10 months?
It could be, yes.
That's short-term?
If you, if you were looked at the campground regulations, it is, yeah.
Well, see, that's, that's my question, and nowhere does it say in this, on this paper, what the maximum allowed stay is. Now, look, and you're, gee, I noticed the meetings of one, one of the boards where you got up and says, "Yeah, well, maybe, maybe these Smith College students that are, that are looking for..."
For a three-month period of time.
But you're, now you're telling me nine months, that's a school year.
I was just wondering...
So this is becoming a rental, this can, this has the potential, that you could rent every one of these to a college student?
It does that happen. Is that my plan, though? Does that have potential?
That, I don't think belongs in a residential neighborhood. Just think, if you, all right, you couldn't fill it, you're not making enough money on people coming in, you're not hitting your vacancy rate mark, okay? So you end up renting to students. I got a bunch of garbage in my backyard now, okay? Because students, I was a student, I was not respectful. I, the potential for bad actors and bad actions just doesn't seem to be worth the risk of rezoniness and letting this happen. What about the people on the, what about the people who are here on the cul-de-sac with all the kids? I mean, this is going to have an impact on the neighborhood that I can't see is going to be beneficial to...
Area, like?
Yeah.
Is going to be beneficial to anybody, but the owners of this five acres.
So you have neighbors, one, two, three, I presume, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, of Butters.
Yep, so all the houses...
And then a roadway with people across the street, one, two, three...
This is pretty far where the cottages are, but...
From where this cottage is.
The houses, these neighbors are sitting closer to West Street.
Right.
I mean, seeing what these, back here, they sit pretty far away from our property line. In fact, we hear them more than they hear us. But to answer the second question that David was asking about the one-week period of time, I think it was more of during like Thanksgiving week, or Christmas week, or New Year's week. The, I'm limited to the language also that the planning board decides, I don't, it's not my field. So I just, you know, Jessica, I think had been researching it on, based on campgrounds and not having a year-round.
So I think we need to clarify, I think we need to clarify what we're talking about, whether it's seasonal, six months, and not...
No, I think, sorry, I think it is in there, but, yeah.
Well, it is. It says to me, it says here that it could be during the remainder of the year, so this is year-round. It's called seasonal, but it's year-round.
Yeah.
Not year-round, not year-round, solid year-round, in the winter months, no one would be allowed to stay, I think, per that, more than a seven-day period of time.
Seasonal cottage community may provide for short-term use, up to seven days, and any 30-day period per tenant during the remainder of the year. So, remainder of the year, it's possible that some... So remainder of the year, it's possible that somebody could be there every month during the year.
Not, not in a solid, not in a circle, but in, yeah.
It isn't like limited to April to November. It's December, January, February, March, there is possible, there is occupancy.
There is short, very short-term, like every get a time now.
But I thought you just said someone could stay like a school year for nine months.
Only during the, from April. I'm not calling it a school year. I'm not, you see, I'm not interested in renting to a kid. I mean, I've had businesses all my life. I like to keep a pretty tight rein on things. Um, so my, what I would not wanna do is rent to a college kid. That sounds like a nightmare to me, honestly. Um, but during, on this paperwork that David was referencing, I don't know what page it is, it's, it's, uh, seasonal would be beginning whenever it says April first through the end of, I don't know, October or November.
Was there ever any discussion in all these meetings, I will, I haven't finished reading all of them in a show, but were there ever any discussions on breaking up people's stay? So you didn't get a nine-month or a year-round person there?
Uh, no, because the planning board was fine going on their campground rules.
Well, well, wait, wait a second.
So, yeah.
I think you're a campground, but this is seasonal cottage, cottage is gonna be, but all of your, all of your basis for trying to justify this is, is on the campground, right? Which has certain rules and regulations, right? But they're writing the rules and regulations for a seasonal community, for a seasonal cottage community. If you're, it seems like it's apples and oranges. I don't know, maybe I've got the wrong perspective on this, but...
Well, from my understanding, we don't currently have a seasonal cottage zoning.
Right, so this is branded that.
In trying to fashion it, they're using the campground and you're saying instead of the campground zoning, you would rather see business zoning, I mean, commercial zoning, those, those parameters?
I would rather not, no, it's a residential area. I don't wanna see any commercial, okay?
Yeah.
I can see commercial if this, well, this used to all be a huge farm.
Yeah.
Yeah, the farm standing up front.
No problem. Yeah.
Right? If you're selling to support the farm. But this is introducing a whole new way of doing things to the town of East Hampton. East Hampton is trying to write the rules. The rules that I've seen are so vague that it seems like a lot more work has to be done on this. And number one is I got a feeling that people are gonna say, well, it's gonna be, if we let this in, and this isn't the only property in East Hampton, right? There's multiple that qualify for the, for the five-plus acres.
You have a number of, how many?
I don't, I know that...
It's on the order of twenty to forty properties. I'm not exactly sure of the number that fall within the current proposal.
Okay, well.
Five acres, essentially the five acres in R thirty-five, R forty, I think it said, and R eighty. But I'm not sure.
R thirty, yeah. Alright, so we don't have any, anything to compare this to.
No.
So we have to focus on this, because this is the, you know, and if you're gonna set a precedent on this, I just wonder how the, how the city's gonna benefit. The way it is now, I don't even, you know, like with Airbnb, city does not currently collect any revenue off these rentals, okay? I understand that there might be some things and words at the state level, but it's the city, we're gonna add to the sewer load, sewer and water load, we're gonna add to the fire protection load, we're gonna add to the police department's load. How does the city, how does the city gonna benefit from this? Is it gonna be because they'll collect more property taxes because of upgrades of building? And if you allow this to go through, whatever the value of this property, whatever the value of this property, this boom, 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 every abudder. I would think that it's not going to improve my property value. I think it'll probably go the other way. And when the other abudders become aware of this, I think that they're probably gonna think the same way I do. Because I don't see how the city benefits, the neighborhood benefits. I see one beneficiary right here. And that's only if we change the rules so they can benefit.
Let's get back to a second for changing the rules. Right now, uh, we're zoned R thirty-five, which allows for a single-family use primarily, a duplex use primarily, residential uses.
Yeah.
And you were saying a campground.
Well, there's other things that fall into auto repair shop or auto parts store.
Yeah.
Campground.
A three-bay, a three-bay auto repair, if I recall.
Oh, I don't think it was auto repair, I thought it was a part store. But I, I mean, I don't...
I'm not sure about that.
I mean, I just...
Certainly a farm stand on an operating farm.
I just skimmed over that, I know, you know.
Would be something that, that I think you would mention.
So it allows for like, or the R thirty-five allows for maybe five or six different types of businesses.
Very limited business use.
Yeah.
Very limited business use, nearly a residential neighborhood. I understand that. In terms of values, uh, I think you're right. I think you're right in terms of the value. Here, the property would go up. There would be some taxable benefit to this community as a result of that. The taxable benefit may be offset by fire and police protection. I don't know, possible. Or, but certainly offset by the surrounding properties and values of the surrounding properties. I think having a business operation in the middle of a residential neighborhood, it's really not a usual occurrence in the, in the community.
I think there would be enough buffer that these people...
I have some concern, I have some real concerns about that.
Right now it's a very quiet area.
And here's, here's the other thing, is that I've got about three acres of flat land right here, right? Okay, okay, my frontage is on West Street, okay? And I don't have much frontage. If I wanted to quote-unquote "commercialize" this, and I've been in the trades for a long time, I'm a general contractor, and I wanted to put another house or two on there, I would have to go through the existing hoops. And number one, I don't have the frontage. I'm gonna have to build a road. You know, that's very expensive. Now, what they are proposing is just on her, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ten new buildings, ten potential sewer hookups. And you don't have any frontage.
It, I can't answer the, the legal questions about this. It's honestly not my...
Do you, do you know how much frontage you do have?
Um, I don't have it on this paper, but I do have it on another paper. Yeah, this is right here.
Is that something that I would wanna?
Yeah, this is, this is a huge concern for us, is the shared driveway, that whole area. That would have to be completely reworked and blocked out.
And both, you both share the same driveway.
There's two entrances, actually. There's a...
The drive that goes south of there.
One, one at a time, go ahead, I'm busy.
That's okay, that's okay. There's a, well, it says gravel. So this does show it, actually. Um, this, this is a partially paved road with the driveway going out this way. And then this is gravel for, this is West Street, if you think of, this is West Street here. And it, so it's like a double entrance.
Okay.
So you could turn right really easily or you can turn left.
Turn right, turn left.
But that's the concern, because we get so much traffic right now coming into our driveway. They stop and they look at the no trespassing signs and then they just keep coming.
It, you know, we don't have any, because it's happening now, before you even get a load, put a load on the property, what's gonna happen when you get more people?
Sure, sure.
And like I said, you don't have the buffer here and if you have to move the road, and even if for some reason, which I can't imagine, that this stands, because you don't have the frontage. I mean, the town, the planning board and the town council cannot say, we're gonna require you to do this and this and this for me to knock down this fire and put two houses out here, right? They ask me, and then let a dirt-pitted road be access to all this activity?
Well, I think, obviously, everything would get cleaned up. I mean, you've seen the property, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I mean, alright, so it's a road. Is this road gonna be held to the same standard as a subdivision road? That's what I wanna know.
I mean, this is our...
It should be, because this is a subdivision.
Right, and this is our home and I really don't wanna have a moat, so to speak, you know, with fences all around my whole entire property. I mean, some fences are really pretty and nice with landscaping and that would be great, but, you know, we bought the property because of what it is. I don't wanna have cars coming down here constantly, all day and all night.
And the other thing, for the minutes, I'd like the planning board to address the issue of length of stage, because if you're gonna let somebody stay there, a seasonal, you know, words mean something. Seasonal or a campground, campground brings up, okay, I might be there two weeks max. I lived in White Birch three weeks in my van when I had, between brother, I had no place to go, okay? But it's, brings up connotations of short-term. If, they even let the potential for a nine-month stay here. You can't call this seasonal and you can't call it cottage. You gotta call it rental units and then you gotta put it back into the subdivision. Now, the history of this place, the last thing we had to do before we closed is Ted Cole had to go before the town and rescind a approved, an approved subdivision. They were gonna put, I think, eleven or fourteen houses up there. Right?
I don't think it was that many.
What's, come on, I mean, it's a different scale, what's the difference?
Can I speak to something?
There's one quick question. When I hear subdivision, you're talking on, on this parcel alone?
This was all one parcel.
Both parcels.
Yeah, both parcels.
Doug Cole, Doug Cole had put together a proposal for a subdivision here.
I think combined, because it was all one parcel at one time.
And I don't remember how many units were in it.
Yeah, I have my answer there.
And, but there was a plan, there was a plan to drive in a road and...
Yeah, the same road, yeah.
And drop, and, and, I, it couldn't be the same road.
Well, I meant, I meant the same entranceway, but...
It could be the same entranceway, but then he controlled both parcels at the time, if I'm, if I'm...
The person that owned the house, previous to my owning, owned both these units.
Owned both the units.
And, um, or both the pieces of land and they had put in the paperwork to do a subdivision.
A subdivision.
Doug Cole and then Doug Cole died or something.
For the subdivision to get approved, they had to have minimum acreage and that acreage, it was kind of a farce in the first place because of buildable hand right there.
You guys...
You've got five of the fourteen acres that are down in Westland.
Can I ask a question? If we're having one road coming in, is there gonna be a road somewhere else?
Secondary road.
No, there has to be a turnaround for, um...
Fire and...
Yeah, fire and police and stuff like that. Mostly for a fire truck. It has to be fifteen feet wide. This is actually like twenty-five or thirty.
So this is the only in and out?
Yep, that's all they were talking to you about. But I wanted two things. The West Hampton campground allows for a solid nine-month stay. It's up the road a little bit. I don't know the address of it. So there's a campground in West Hampton, a K O A, and people can go there and stay from the beginning, whatever the camping season is to the end of the camping season.
Okay.
Is it in the middle of a residential?
I'm not quite sure how that's relevant here.
Uh, because this is what Jessica was, or the planning board was working on, you know, because this is, all this, the language is made from scratch, basically, uh, and because the R thirty-five was, is still zoned for a campground use. Um, she just, we just started with that language, like what does a campground allow for? And so, um, the question was, well, I think what I'm speaking to is David just said he stayed somewhere for two weeks. But actually, at the West Hampton campground, you can stay for a nine-month period of time.
Right, right.
But I think that, and I don't know where that is, but is that in the middle of our residential area? That's a huge difference.
I'm thinking that same question, because I'm thinking...
No, no, it's not.
I think you're talking apples and oranges when you're talking about West Hampton and here.
The reason I'm bringing it up is because of the language and the thing, not because...
I understand.
Not because I'm interested, they're all renting to someone nine months straight. I live on this property, right? So, um, but that's why I'm bringing it up, is because I'm speaking to a two-week period of time and I'm saying, no, in West Hampton, you can stay longer in a campground.
Right.
Um, and so when Doug Cole had this, then he died or something, he died, right?
Yeah.
And then this was foreclosed on? Did you guys buy this as a foreclosure? Yeah, then this was foreclosed.
It went through foreclosure once, but when we bought it, uh, previous owner had supposedly had it surveyed, which I've never seen the survey.
I have a survey, if you want to see.
Had for a lot of time, and wheeled this off because they were in such financial problems. He, he was behind in arrears and to the town and taxes, and wheeled this off, right? And, you know, to try to survive and once he went through that, it didn't take him long to go to that money, because they were still, and when they sold that property, they had to get current on a lot of things. And I know that there was, um...
I'm not sure, your point on this?
My point is?
I'm sorry.
She brought it up, I don't know, I just...
I was just saying, to, to have a subdivision, you had to have owned both properties and it's not the way it is anymore.
Okay, it's not that way anymore. You have two separate parcels.
Yeah.
You have five acres, a little over five acres here, if I'm not mistaken, okay? So that would qualify according to the way that the regulation, the, the new proposal, okay? I just wanna bring it back to, away from foreclosures and that.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Back to where the subdivision, where we're headed.
Tracked.
Any other benefits to the community?
Oh, I think there's huge tax benefits to the community. The community doesn't have a hotel in town. There's no lodging for anyone. Um, this certainly would satisfy some of that need, I think. And what I want, I mean, I get the, the languages for any parcel out there, that's five acres or more. But really what I'm looking for is a more upscale place where there's a kibosh, I mean, no one's gonna be out making fires past a certain time or getting drunk or, you know, and you, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna get drunk, but they won't be...
Can't control that.
Well, I think you can. I mean, at the campgrounds, they, they are like at a quiet hours at a certain time and things like that. So do I wanna haul somebody off? I don't, yes, I will.
And you know, one of my other, my concerns is too, I mean, you were, you're talking about trails and hiking and paths and things like that. And I think things are gonna have to be clearly marked, because the people, it's not their fault, they don't know where the boundaries are. And abutting all this land over here is a huge dingle that goes way out.
Wetlands over here.
Right, but it's a huge, it's a dingle and...
And it's wooded.
It's wooded. I have a concern about that. You have some kids, even though you're saying you're gonna try to control everything, young people go traveling down into the dingle, oh, where are we? Come up on our property, you know? That's a concern to me.
I'm confused. When you say, when you say trails, you're talking about tr...
I don't have any trails.
You don't have any trails.
But it's advertised as trails.
You advertise trails on Airbnb, walking trails. You advertise that right now. So if you can't control it now and you get more people and you're only one person and you could promise me the world, but I want the town to promise me that my concerns aren't gonna come true.
Sure, I think they should. I think anything that we're referring to is back around the apple trees back here.
Okay, I'm just saying, I, you know, I, my concern is I'd like it clearly marked, because people are gonna do what people are gonna do.
I think you're right.
And they're gonna just go wherever they wanna go and I don't wanna be worried about some guy walking up through the dingle into my yard at night.
I'm confused here. I was talking, asking if you have walking trails.
I don't have walking trails.
And you don't have walking trails, but then...
No, but you're advertising.
I thought you just said that you...
I don't know what it's, I don't have like walking trails. I think the way we're at, I would have to go back to the website. The way we're advertising is that you're welcome to walk on our property.
Of course, I mean, anyone would be welcome to walk on your property. I guess my question was that.
This is all wetlands, no bringing... This is all wetlands, no bringing them down.
This is where your land ends, right, is that, is that correct?
Yes, this is all wetlands down here.
You own, you don't own this parcel?
You guys own that, right?
We own-
You own this, this, and-
Like I said, it's all vague, J P, from the, there's a pin right here, or there used to be.
There is, yeah.
There's a pin right here.
Yeah.
So you, I don't know if it goes and cuts like this, or how.
Just, I didn't know if you could clarify, but you don't own this, you're talking about the-
I'm just saying, anybody is welcome to walk on our property.
The people on, um, Logville Road, is it Logville, or is it called that?
Clendale.
Clendale Road.
But with the baseball?
You know, the guy that has Large Field, second house in? Large Field, and he sponsors baseball teams, yeah. I don't know who that is, but I think that's-
That may be his property.
He's gonna be in a butter, because he has a lot of property that goes right up, like I said, that's all wet land, and he got Van Hand coming down here.
You can't really walk, I mean, I don't know what, I understand the concern, and I don't know what the future would bring or not, but in my eyes, this is like soaking wet, and I don't think people would walk down there.
Way down at the bottom, it is, but not close to where I'm talking about.
It's maybe dry for twenty feet.
I think we've addressed that enough. Are you comfortable with that, okay? Anything else you wanted to share to?
Oh, no, actually, what we're just trying to do is make the community better, you know, that's, that's our plan anyway.
That's our hope, that we have a better community.
Exactly. There, you know, be more tax money, and provide some lodging for people that wanna come and visit family, and schooling, or whatever in the area.
We, we don't, we don't wanna-
We wanna keep it quiet, I mean, sorry, no, it's fine.
No, I'm just saying, we, it seems like this is not the proper forum. We don't wanna take up all your time, I know you guys have more on your agenda. Would you think it'd be better just to-
Well, I certainly think that whatever else we have, when we get to the joint hearing, that would be an appropriate time to continue the discussion, and to see if there are any other thoughts that anyone has to share.
But I also think it's helpful to start the discussion now, I mean, it sounds like there's a combination of needing clarification on some things, and then making sure that your concerns are being heard and dealt with, and I think you also have your own ideas and being able to hear directly from Mindy.
Totally, I mean, most ways, I think.
One of the things that I'm hearing is that you, Mindy, you have intentions for the property, and there's always the concern of, what if, what if this was all approved and you were to die the next day? If there was another person who, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean this.
You didn't mean it that way.
Maybe left. But when things are, when things are classified now, how are you going to be-
That may not be your intention.
How are you going to be sure that that won't change slowly?
My understanding is you guys are gonna sell, you're flipping, and you're gonna sell, is that what's happening? Well, not like flipping fast, not like a six-month flip, but from talking to David, my understanding is you guys were fixing up the property so that you'd sell.
We will one day sell this property.
Yeah, my family's here right now.
But the reason we bought it is because we had to come back to the area and take care of her parents who are elderly, okay? It's, what I'm gonna do with that, I'm not asking the town to change my zoning, to change my status, I just pay my property and water and sewer. The difference is, and look, I've been, I've been in this business a long time, this is, the best word for this would be a development, like Bernie Gall did on Hendrick Street, okay, like Dickie Boyle did, like the Boyle, like, you know, this is a development. You are basically altering the whole composition of the neighborhood with this in here. And we're getting a lot, we're gonna get a lot of visitors, and I'm sure that ninety-five percent of them, maybe ninety-nine percent of them, are gonna be fine, upstanding, law-abiding people. If you, if, with the language as it is written now, and you allow college students back here, or you keep your, you can't rent, you drop your rates, it's cheap, kids are smart, they're gonna say, hey, we could rent one of these things for eighty bucks a night. Let's have a party. I mean, that doesn't happen now, that happens everywhere in town.
It happens right here, actually.
It happens across the street?
No, the kids like park, pull into our parking area and party right there.
Oh, yeah, so it's, yeah, they have, we get, we get people in this driveway, because it's hidden, it's back off the street. And we have refrained from calling the police, but I'm telling you, if we still get people coming over here, I mean, this is right now, Mindy, this is not even, this is not even in effect, but because you're, you're renting room here, and people get on there, the next time somebody gets on my, I'm gonna start calling the police. And that's not good.
No, I don't even know that that's happening, I mean, I believe all the fire-
But you're gonna manage all this, but it's already happening. So what, what am I supposed, what are we supposed to believe?
No, I, I mean, I think part of this is talking to each other, I mean, you, I, I thought you'd have a good line of communication, you could call me.
No, I thought we did too, but I, when we first met and opened the campground, and said, I can't do this.
In a residential neighborhood.
Here we are.
Well, right, I was thinking tents, RVs, that's not what I wanted, was tents and RVs, and it just-
Well, to us, this is huge, so.
It's totally understandable, like, I'm not, I'm not upset, I like you guys, you know? I think we're both making everything better, or I hope that. I don't like that my upstairs tenant's kid's calling your dog, 'cause I'm trying to keep your dog off my property, as I'm trying to keep my dog off your property, because your property is towards the street, and I don't, I don't let my dog off leash on my property, so.
As I said, we're in the process of training, and it's been taking a lot, longer than we thought.
I was worried about your dog when we were doing the roof, like, with all the nails coming over to say hi and stuff like that, so.
Hopefully, we can all talk to one another civilly.
Oh, yeah.
You both, you're all doing, you're all doing a good job, so I appreciate that very much, we, we do. In terms of renting, you said you were renting your tenant, and-
Yeah, I have an upstairs tenant.
Can you tell us about the rentals that you currently have now?
Well, this is a two-family house, and I have an upstairs tenant. With, he has kids sometimes, and he has, um, there are cars on and off the property from him, he has an ex-wife and a mother who upstairs there, all kids all the time.
It's a two-family.
It is, two-family.
And then you have an Airbnb?
Well, I am renting a space as an Airbnb space, there was an individual, another individual unit there, and so we have been renting that as an Airbnb space, and it's, it's filled maybe fifteen days a month.
So you're zoned for a two-family, but this becomes a three-family?
Right now, we are doing a part-time rental. This, I just asked the tenant to leave, so he'll be leaving at the end of July. Partly because of how many people-
How long will it be part-time before it becomes permanent? And how many people are living back there now? And what about there, nothing in, nothing in language about.
One question at a time, I don't think Mindy can answer a question. How many, you said there are a lot?
Well, I live there, I live there.
In one unit, right.
And I have a tenant in another unit that has kids, and an ex-wife.
Upstairs.
Yeah, yeah, he has two kids, he has an ex-wife, I can go on and on.
And how many units?
Yeah.
And then, and then you said you have an Airbnb?
We, we have a pretty nice little section here, that's just a, a living room and a bedroom that we rent out as an Airbnb right now.
And actually, about three weeks ago, we were just, I was just looking online, 'cause I'm always looking for, trying to find some old pictures of the house and stuff, and I found those, at, three weeks ago maybe, four, twenty-one reviews.
Yeah, we, we are-
So, that's a lot of people.
This partly is why I think that there is need for short-term housing.
But my point is, twenty-one reviews, that's a lot of people that were coming in and out, and, and, go ahead.
Renting, renting an Airbnb, I'm not, I'm not sure we have any regulations that, that cover Airbnb rentals or rentals on a short-term basis. I don't think we have anything like that, so.
But my point is, here's one room that's being rented out with all this traffic coming in, twenty-one, twenty-one reviews three weeks ago, that's not even tent.
Yeah, it might be temporary to the people renting, but if it's rented thirty out of thirty-one days, is that called temporary? It's like your seasonal is gonna be, yeah, all four seasons. That, it doesn't make sense to me. You can't have it one way when you're arguing this position, and then have it another way when you're trying to argue a different position. You can't keep going back to, well, it's, I'm approved for a camp, good, do a campground. No, try-
If you're approved for a campground.
Would you rather see a campground with tents and RVs?
Yeah, but you're gonna have-
I'd rather not see.
But, hey, there is, this is another thing, it's, people, say you get a, somebody wants it two weeks, it shows up in a, in a camper, an RV, you're gonna have hookups for gray water?
I'm not interested, and that's why we're talking to the city about changing some of the zoning, but yet, if, if we wanted to do a campground, and if the city let us do a campground, we would have hookups. I mean, it's right into the sewer, right, it's city sewer and water.
It's, it's the same thing, but I tell you, if you've got it, but you're creating a brand-new zone.
Try to focus on what we're, what the proposal is and what we're creating. So over here, I understood there was a living unit.
No, there's no, I think, um, I don't know what David pointed to this, I think he was just, I'm not sure, and if I'm incorrect, I think he was just saying if there were cottages of people coming on and off.
Oh, over there?
There's no living area, this is all-
I'm sorry, over here.
There is a bathroom in this building. It was existing from when I bought it, there's a kitchen and a bathroom in that building.
Was it ever permitted?
Uh, I have no idea, but it's existing.
Good question, because they did a lot of illegal building back there.
I think this was before, um, the previous owner, that was done before the previous owner.
It should be historical record.
There's a kitchen and a bathroom.
I mean, it's pretty rough back there.
That's hooked up to sewer.
Well, it has a, it has an ejection port that lives in, yeah. Uh, there were, before I was here, there was a couple that were living there. Well, there was a, an RV, sorry, this place was, had a lot of people on it. There was a mobile, or an RV, a camper, camper here, and there was an RV here. So people were using the bathroom in this building, and using the kitchen in this building before I bought it.
But nobody's there, nobody's there.
What was it, but if you're thinking about, you said that you were-
Yeah, you said that I said one of the-
I think what I, what I'm trying to do is, it doesn't look like it here, and again, this was done very quickly this afternoon. I mean, I've been thinking about it for a while, but the drawing was-
Well, you're also thinking about whether that's a legal hook, that's a legal hookup right there.
Right, so.
And does it even, you're a big, this is, here's, here's your house, right? You're telling me that there's a sewer line?
Uh, there is, actually.
There is?
Yeah, they have, they have a pump that pumps it to, to wherever in the line there, I think it's through the, this is a dirt road here. So I'm trying to have less buildings on the property, but yeah, make a living as well. And so, my idea was to take something that was existing and make this into one of the larger cottages. This is way big right now, because there's a part of this that needs to get torn down, because it's dilapidated. But instead of putting another building on, I just thought, let's just take this, modify it, so that we're not just filling up every single space, I mean, green space is important to us as well. It's very important, actually.
We like, we like green space.
Which is why we wanna keep all these garden areas, we wanna grow some food and give the food to the food bank, the food pantry in East Hampton, as well as the apples that come off of these trees. So we wanna donate a bunch of food to the food bank and the city food pantry as well. So, we'd like to have it be a give-and-take, you know, kind of relationship with the city.
Anything else?
I, will there be employees?
Uh, I'm sure there would be one or two, I don't see it, I mean, somebody needs to clean, right? And, um, probably me would be on site, you know, to make sure everything's fine and-
It's a lot to take care of.
Well, I don't, don't get me wrong, I, I would love if we were able to do this, that it was full, and people were piling out of it, do I think that's gonna happen? I have no idea. You know, I think there might be certain weekends, graduation weekends, things like that, that it might be busy, and other weekends that it wouldn't be, or not weekends, but other times of the year that it wouldn't be quite as busy. And again, this is just like a number that we thought that this amount of land could hold based on the size of the cottages, because we wanna do something very, these being very small, two-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet, something like that, so. It is important for us to keep it really nice, and really quiet, really upscale, if we can, and kind of keep a kibosh on the crazy partying, I'm not interested in college students.
And within budget.
And within budget.
Because there's a price for a square foot when you build.
So, right, um, yeah, so, um, do I think it would be full all the time? I have no idea. There's no way to know that, because there's no, no data to draw off in the city of East Hampton, as far as I'm concerned, but hotels or what the usage, I certainly could try and find out in North Hampton, the percentage of hotel rentals, or, you know, something like that.
As a business plan, that may be helpful, but in terms of the zoning, I'm not sure that-
Doesn't matter, right.
That doesn't, doesn't matter to us. But I would, as a business plan, I would wanna know what the occupancy was.
There's a lot to figure out, if this is gonna be okay.
In terms of size, you mentioned two-hundred-and-seventy-five square-
Well, this one was-
Two-three-inch square feet, I was just, it happens to click that someone I was talking to a few, a few weeks ago was saying, oh, we can go out to the Cape, and there's an old motel that was converted to condos, you know, condos, and it's three-hundred square feet, and you know, we go, it's great, you have a grill, and you can go outside, have a beer, or a glass of wine, and, and a place, a little fire pit, and in fact, everybody, the person from Chicken B, they said, everybody, you know, I, I know lots of people, we all go out there and party, on, you know, at the weekends, yeah, at the Cape. I think it was Dennis, Dennis Port, I don't, I don't-
I don't know that person.
The, the location, on the Cape, there's, there's a community on the Cape. And, and it sounded like the kind of thing that almost you're thinking of, well, okay, there's a place where people could get together, and have a place to go. Hmm, it just sounded similar.
Right, well, I definitely think that there is a similarity with the, um, like, ocean community, you know, the ocean communities, although I think that that, at least for what we want, I, I can't speak to them, but I would, I would say that that's probably more, is more of a party atmosphere, right, because people are, are vacationing at the shore when there's water. You know, all that kind of stuff. I think what we're thinking is that it's gonna be, well, no, I can't tell you why every single person is gonna rent from us, but, um, I think it's be more visiting family in the area, or parents visiting their kids, or who are actually already in college, you know, somewhere, because there aren't, no hotels in East Hampton. So I, I do think that the atmosphere is different from a shore, let's let our hair down, get crazy, as opposed to what we are proposing. I really want it to be quiet, I mean, we have a beautiful piece of property, I, they have a beautiful piece of property, ours is more private than theirs.
The parcels are beautiful.
Right, it's, it's all beautiful, and I think what we want is to keep what's beautiful, hence we wanna, you know, keep some of this that's already there.
And one of the reasons we bought this beautiful piece of property is the privacy. I mean, you'd have to go out there and see, what, once the, the trees fell in, kills most of the road noise, we are secluded, can't even hardly see her buildings, right? That changes what, when I, when we start getting numerous people going, using that road day and night, if they're at full occupancy, and she says how well the, well, the, the community, it's a nice place to stay, and they can share, and so, well, the schools aren't in during the summer, what happens during the summer?
Well, I do think it would be people visiting their family in the area. And summer school is in, I mean-
I don't know about the business plan, but all I know is that it's gonna disrupt the neighborhood, it's, um-
Certainly, it would impact, um, David.
It's gonna have a negative impact on the neighborhood, which should be the town, the town's main concern when they're thinking about sticking this in R thirty-five. R eighty'd be much better. Not R thirty-five. And I just wanna butter, Mindy, but I'm telling you, the other butters aren't aware of this. I know, well, now I know some are, because I've talked to them, and they're going, what do you mean, we're gonna get the same old crap back again that we used to have? That's been the main comment. We'll see, we'll see, we gotta go.
Beginning to the next, the next level, do you have any other questions at this point?
I don't know if I answered...
I hope everybody's had a chance to express their opinions, this won't be the only time.
No, no, it's fine, I just, when I talked to Darby, he was just like, just show up, so I wasn't sure if you were gonna have any more questions for me, or, I mean, I just...
We certainly, well, well, may have questions all the way through the process. And again, that would be the joint meeting on June sixth, uh, of the planning board and the Yorkin Subcommittee, and then at a subsequent city council meeting to review the recommendations of the planning board and some, and then nine members in the council. Both of us.
Okay. So that's like a two-month process or something, or three months?
Um, I, there is a time, a time flow, it wouldn't take more than three months, I think it may take less.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because there are certain specific times that it'll, has to be dealt with.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but the next important meeting is the sixth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we hope to see you there.
We'll be there.
I was just gonna say, I'm sure we'll see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That was amazing.
Can we continue? Okay.
Thank you, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move, Alex, move to the right.
So move. Second.
Second.
That's a juror. Stay here.